And happy Valentine's Day. We have all nine members, Board members present. Ms. Coates will be joining us in a little bit. She's running a little bit late, so we'll call this meeting to order, and the moment of silence and pledge of allegiance will be by Ms. Hill tonight.
I understand there's been another school shooting today, and I'd like this moment of silence to be dedicated to those families and victims that are right now in a lot of hurt. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Hill, for bringing that to our attention. And a couple of announcements tonight. The Knox County Schools Career Day will be held tomorrow, February 15th, from 4:07 at the Knoxville Expo Center located at 5441 Clinton Highway. On behalf of the Board, thank you to Pelosiapi State Community College for being our presenting sponsor, and to all of the participating educational institutions and business partners. We are looking forward to our spring 2018 Knox County Schools Recruitment Fair, which will be held at Central High School located at 5321 Jacksboro Pike from 9:00 a.m. till 12:00 noon on Saturday, March 3rd. I don't see any elected officials in the audience tonight. If you are, please wave your hand. Okay. Then we will move on to changes to the agenda. Mr. McMillan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm requesting that the Board add an item to the agenda to consider approving a request from Gibbs Middle to engage in an agreement with the Valor Academy in Nashville to implement the compass model of social and emotional success skills with their students. And I think each Board member should have some information at their seat there. If there are questions, we'll deal with that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Norman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to add a short, just a brief discussion on cultural competency as regards what's taking place on Monday.
Okay. Do I hear a motion that we approve the agenda with these two changes to it?
A question, Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Hill.
I just saw this, Mr. McMillan. Is there any cost involved with this?
Ms. Jackson, do you want to come address that?
We could get into a discussion of it.
All right, thank you. That's correct.
This is just an added, Ms. Hill.
So moved. So moved.
And I'll second those additions.
Okay, so motion made by Ms. Hill, seconded by Ms. Fugit, all in favor of these changes to the agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries. Oh, yes, sorry. Okay, yes, thank you. We don't want to miss that. As you know, our Knox County Schools students recently participated in an attempt to break the world record for the most students learning to code at the same time. I'm happy to introduce Brandon Bruce from Serious Insights and Caleb Christo of the Great Schools Partnership to share more detailed information as we recognize this amazing feat, as the numbers have now been documented and verified. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for having us. So we have the certificate here. As you might have seen in the paper, we had 6,778 students verified that participated, really on the day of. We counted, we had over 8,000, approaching 9,000 students participate. Some were younger, using iPads, and they didn't count all those students. But we're thrilled to have broken the record. We've already gotten a lot of regional and technology, even some national press coverage, which has been fun to see. So the idea really germinated over lunch. Caleb and I talked about how can we shine a spotlight on all the great work that the teachers, parents, administrators are doing in the schools with respect to teaching coding and STEAM classes. And so we came up with this idea, which was, hey, if we can break Guinness World Record, that's something that everybody rallies around. And of course, in Knoxville, we're very good at that. We broke the record for game attendance in Bristol. We have the biggest letter "T" in the stadium, so we thought this would be pretty easy. But really, credit to Caleb, who took the lead in all the logistics, and Teresa Nixon at Knox County Schools, and she wasn't able to come today, but she was really a leader in connecting with all the teachers and making sure everything went off with a hitch. Because it's no, so that was a key for Guinness. They had to start the lesson and end the lesson at the exact same time. So we had about 12 students that joined us to shoot an instructional video. So what, one thing that was neat about the project is, it wasn't just us telling the kids, this is how you code. That's not really how coding works. It's a collaborative, creative process. So my daughter, who's in second grade, and about a dozen other students, created the video that the other students watched, and then they simultaneously played along and learned how to code. So for those of you that saw some of the coverage on Twitter or the news afterwards, you'll know that in Scratch, which is the program they use to learn, the first thing you do is try to figure out a way to get the cat to meow. And so once they got the cat to meow, we had a lot of really loud classrooms across Knox County, because you put it in a loop, and the cat keeps meowing over and over again until you figure out how to end the loop. So it was a lot of fun. We're glad to have done it. Hopefully, we'll have a chance to do it again in the future. But yeah, I think it's a cause to celebrate that we had almost 7,000 kids go home that day after breaking the record with a certificate that looks like this, that said, "I participated in breaking a world record." So there's a lot of local pride, and hopefully, we'll keep it here in Knoxville for a long time. Thank you all.
Did you want to say anything? If you'll come on up here to the platform, I think there's a picture opportunity. Right there. Okay. Okay, Ms. Coate.
Item 7, consent agenda.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Mr. McMillan. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Item 8A, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy. Aye for 40 wellness policy, nutritional standards for food items sold as amended.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
9A, approve grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Education for a 2018 Read to Be Ready Summer Program Grant in the amount of $139,400 designated for Green Mining Academy, Lonsdale Elementary School, and Samy Moore Green Mining Academy.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Deathridge, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
9B, approve application and receipt of funds from the Tennessee Department of Education for a 21st Century Community Learning Center Grant in the amount of $108,000 designated to provide after-school academic and enrichment support to students at Enskip Elementary School.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
9C, approve receipt of community grant from the town of Farragut Board of Mayor and Alderman in the amount of $22,000 for Farragut Intermediate School for fiscal year 2017-2018.
Motion by Ms. Horn, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
9D, approve application and receipt of funds from a Lowe's Toolbox for Education Grant from the Lowe's Gives Back Foundation in the amount of $5,000 for Fulton High School designated to create a makerspace within the school's media center.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
9E, approve application and receipt of funds from a Simon Youth Foundation Enhancement Grant in the amount of $3,632 for Dr. Paul L. Kelly Volunteer Academy.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Ms. Fugit. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
9F, approve memorandum of understanding with the Great Schools Partnership for receipt of grant funds in the amount of $2,250 designated for installation of a water bottle refill station and supplies for the outdoor classroom at Westview Elementary School.
Do I hear a motion? Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
9G, approve application and receipt of funds from a Knoxville Chapter of the Tennessee Society of Professional Engineers Grant in the amount of $1,000 for the L&amp;N STEM Academy designated for the purchase of equipment to be used in the school's microbiology class.
Motion by Ms. Deathridge, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
9H, approve application and receipt of funds from a Target Field Trip Grant in the amount of $700 for Samy Moore Green Mining Academy designated for student field trip to WVLT-TV.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Fugit, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
9I, approve donation from Knoxville Central High School Athletic Foundation in the approximate amount of $48,955 designated for Phase 2 of construction of a new indoor baseball and softball hitting facility at Central High School.
Motion made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. All in favor, any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
9J, approve donation from North Shore Elementary School PTA in the approximate amount of $40,311 designated to a landscaping project at North Shore Elementary School.
Motion by Ms. Fugit, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
9K, approve donation from Rocky Hill Elementary School Foundation in the amount of $18,300 designated to purchase Imagine Language and Literacy Licenses for Rocky Hill Elementary School.
Motion by Ms. Fugit, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
10A, approve fiscal year 2017 central cafeteria fund balance designation in the amount of $1,189,867.64.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Deathridge. Any discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Item 10B, approve request to replace the windows in the original Pond Cap Elementary School using Skilled Services LLC up to $460,000.
Motion by Ms. Fugit, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
10C, approve revision to the 2017-2018 school calendar.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
10D, approve proposal regarding Lonsdale Elementary School and Sammy Hill Family Community Center.
Motion by Ms. Deathridge, seconded by Mr. Norman.
Madam Chair, we have two public speakers signed up for this agenda item. Our first speaker is Tiffany Holmes. Tiffany Holmes, Knox County. I'm proud to say that I am a second-grade teacher at Lonsdale Elementary School. This is my 13th year teaching, and within those 13 years, I've also taught at Chilhaway Intermediate School and Ball Camp Elementary, gaining a lot of knowledge through very different experiences at these schools, and so I feel obligated to stand here and advocate for Lonsdale. It is frustrating to speak in the shadow of two new middle schools, but silence shows acceptance, and Lonsdale has been overlooked and passed by too many times to be accepting. We have a very unique and fragile ecosystem at Lonsdale. We receive a number of students in all grade levels that are new to the country and speak limited English or no English at all. So during the day, we are teaching our grade-level curriculum as well as many kindergarten and first-grade skills. We rely on our kindergarten and first-grade teachers for advice, strategies, and materials to use with these students. We even have some second graders who attend phonics lessons with one of our kindergarten classes. Moving our K-1 teachers to Sammy Hill will be detrimental to our school. We are each other's greatest resource. So just to put that in perspective, an example would be that I have 15 students in my classroom currently, and 10 of those students receive ESL services. I'm having a hard time understanding the progression of a decision that seems to be swift and not in the best interest of students. It seems to me that a decision would have had to have been made concerning the split much early in the school year, but our staff was not notified until the end of November. And then a couple of staff and community meetings were scheduled to mask an extremely rushed timeline, a single solution that was the only thing budgeted for, and a counterfeit concern for our school. If the concern had indeed been genuine, Lonsdale Elementary School would not be in the state that it is today. And although you are entitled to your own opinions about the deconstruction of our school, you are not entitled to your own facts. Lonsdale was built in 1936 and was added on to in 1956. Our building is not up to code. The main purpose of building codes is to protect public health, safety, and general welfare as they relate to the occupancy of buildings. We have sick teachers. Some teachers who have taught at Lonsdale for several years have been severely sick. Others have had respiratory and allergy issues. We have cockroach-lined hallways, flooding, mold, and mildew. And after Ms. Griselda, our interpreter, spoke at the work session about having to go up and down the stairs of our building with her crutch, she has been, for lack of a better term, confined to the first floor. Drive through Knox County and look at other schools that the Knox County School System has found a way to fund, like Hardin Valley Elementary. That is a beautiful building. It looks like a college campus. I can't believe that that school is in the same county as my school. That makes me absolutely sick to my stomach. Our robotics team went to the competition at Hardin Valley, and one of our students asked if it had a movie theater bowling alley in it. I'm sorry. We're not asking for any more than others, any other school has within our district. We are asking for a stable, safe, and unified environment for the kids we teach and the families who entrust us with the most important things in their lives. Whether our Knox County students come from another country or have grown up down the road, their importance is the same. But unfortunately, we have learned through this process that there's a difference between what's best for our kids and what's best for our kids because our school does not have a large parent army behind us, or a social media campaign, or the money and resources to get what we need most. We seem to be no threat at all. A school full of immigrants, low-income families, and teachers, who, as Ms. Thompson has put it, "don't complain." But we will continue to fight for what our students deserve. If split, we will continue to fight for a solution that brings our stuff back together, a permanent solution that puts our students in a building that they can thrive in and be proud of. Nothing more and nothing less. A permanent split is not a solution for us. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Griselda Sandodal.
Good afternoon. My name is Griselda Sandodal. I am the full-time interpreter at Lonsdale Elementary and also the community liaison, and I am coming to represent the Hispanic community of Lonsdale. They have wrote a letter, or write a letter, for me to read to the board tonight. And we also, the community went around, and they were able to collect 57 signatures of parents who also support this letter. After attending two separate meetings in regards to the above proposal and attending the board meeting on 11/27/17, as parents of children who are currently enrolled at Lonsdale Elementary and Sammy Hill, we feel that the school system has failed the community, has failed to communicate to families the problem of overcrowding at Lonsdale. Ms. Julie Thompson has held two separate meetings with the community, one on December 13, 2017. On that day, the community would raise questions and concerns in regards to the move to kindergarten and first grade. More meetings were promised before making a final decision. On January 31st, a second meeting was held in the morning, and approximately 18 parents were present. The date, time, and short notice of the meeting was not the most convenient for the majority of our families to attend. We feel that the community deserves another meeting in the afternoon before a final decision is made by the board. On February 2nd, a small group of parents had the opportunity to visit Lonsdale School. A tour was given by Ms. Hensler in order to have a better understanding of the situation and to understand why the recommendation was being made. At this time, we realized that our children deserve better than being taught in the hallways and to switch from one classroom to another to receive ESL classes. Again, we feel the lack of communication among the school and the community failed our children. If the board makes the decisions today without any further meetings with the Lonsdale community, we ask to consider the following suggestions made by the Hispanic community. Do not make this proposal a permanent solution. We want our children under the same roof, not two different schools. At Lonsdale Elementary School, to the top of the list of priority schools to be added to the capital plan improvement, we want our building to be handicap-accessible for students, staff, and community in general. Sammy Hill has only 17 classrooms available. We do not want to have the same conversations three years down the road because of lack of space at Sammy Hill. No outdoor buildings to accommodate the situations will be accepted. Consider building a new elementary, middle school for the Lonsdale community on the property where rural high school stands, which is already a property of Knox County. Provide the same support, services, nurse, after-school programming interpreters currently offer at Lonsdale Elementary. Below, you will find a group of parents who backed up this letter and who will continue to push for a better and bigger school for our children. We thank you for your time and for taking this letter under consideration. We look forward to continue to work together with the school board on closing the disparities for students at Lonsdale Elementary. Thank you.
That concludes public forum on this agenda item.
And I just want to inform you, this letter was done in Spanish. I took the time to translate it for you guys, so I really wanted one of our parents to read it to you in Spanish today, but most of them, they're on Ash Wednesday, so that's why they're not here today. Thank you.
Okay, I saw Ms. Owen's slide, and then Ms. Deathridge. Ms. Owen?
I just want to remind the board, several months ago when this came, well, not really several, a couple of months ago when this came out, it was pointed out that a solution had been in the works for three years, but it was just brought to the community in November. That doesn't seem very transparent. That doesn't seem like we're really working with the parents. To have a community meeting on a Wednesday morning, that kind of says the same thing to me. So I hope we will consider putting this off and letting parents have some input.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I appreciate the parents and the support from the council that came up, but I have attended the meeting several times, and this particular situation came up years ago because we were landlocked and we needed parking space. And as you know, the community has continued to grow, so now you got inside the building capacity problem. I understand that this is not a good solution for everybody, but I'd rather have us to do this in a temporary time frame to get kids off of floors, to get kids in a place where they can at least have a place to sit down and be taught by teachers. 18 parents showed up at that particular meeting because the principal called it at 8:00 on a Wednesday morning. It had nothing to do with Knox County. That was a principal's decision, because she already had a meeting with parents that was already had been established. And so that was the reason why it was 8:00. Julie Thompson and the principal and everybody has been out there several times to try to work out different solutions. And the solutions are, yes, you need a new building, but we don't have the money, nor do we have the building before the kids can move into it anytime soon. So you have to come up with something that's temporary, that hopefully, there will be a permanent solution later on. But right now, the kids cannot be in the floor, in the building, in order to satisfy the needs of the kids at this point. It's not a solution that we would like at this point, and I believe that we have had several meetings, we have had several suggestions, even the superintendent, we have taken all the list of the things that they wanted. I think the administration has been out there several times talking to Lonsdale and Sammy Hill. And so I know that it's not something that everybody's going to like, but we have to do something now. We do. We really have to do something now. And the conversation doesn't have to be with just the people in central office. I think that the conversation could have been with the community and the principals in the building. And then some solutions could have come back to the central office. I'm just not complaining. I'm just stating what's been going on. So it's not like we haven't tried. It's not like we haven't had conversation. It's not like we're not concerned. But something has to be done to get kids off the floor. Something has to be done to get kids in building and space. You've got empty spaces. Sammy Hill, one block and one and a half block over from Lonsdale. And hopefully, this will be something that we can do at this point in time in order to help facilitate a need. And so I appreciate the comments. I appreciate the passion, because I also have passion for the kids. I also, I know that we have a lot of diverse immigrants and minorities, and we're going to try to do whatever we can to help alleviate this situation. But right now, we are just a landlocked issue, and we have to do something. And it's not going to be something that's going to be happy for everybody, but I just want to let everybody know on the board that we have been working, and it's not like we haven't ignored this situation.
Thank you, Ms. Deathridge. Ms. Fugit, did you, okay, Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't see Ms. Hensler here, I don't believe. She couldn't be here tonight. Maybe Ms. Shannon Jackson could help answer this question. So in the information that had been presented, in the presentation from back in November, you know, and as Ms. Deathridge just mentioned, having numerous cluster groups of kids being taught ESL at the same time, and then various interventions in the space issue, I was just wondering, Ms. Jackson, if you could speak to, if that is developmentally the best learning environment for a student, as the teacher was saying, has just arrived to this country? If you could just speak to that, because I know we've, as a background, I'm thinking about the program we've put in place at Central to try and address the needs of our bilingual learners. And so when I'm hearing large groups of kids on the hallway and things, I'm not sure that that's the best learning environment. So if you don't, if you have information about their schedule and how that works, I'd like to just share that publicly on the record. Thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
Good evening. Thank you. So I will say that I've been over one or two times to walk through the building, and what I have seen are intervention groups and EL groups that are in the hallway or in shared classrooms. And the concern there is that students who are in intervention or in EL, that's language acquisition, it's a highly oral learning process, as you well know, and so it is best if those groups can be in places where the distractions around the room are minimized, and the room itself can be used as the first level of scaffold to support the learning.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. I appreciate that.
Ms. Fugit. Thank you. Just, just a comment, following on what Ms. Dethridge and Ms. Roundtree have said, I do think there is an interim solution that has to be done. What I would suggest and encourage the passion that is here tonight, I've been on this board seven and a half years, one meeting doesn't get you that, we need you to stay engaged and mobilize the community and keep bringing the situation forward and advocating for capital improvements. That's typically how it works, there's limited resources and we make a capital plan years out, and I, I hear your concerns and I am, that happens with some of our old buildings, and then we balance that with growth in other parts of the district where we have kids sitting on a floor there as well. So I just encourage you to keep the conversation going and the passion to help the community move this forward.
Mr. Norman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks to the speakers, you all did a very good job, and you're learning several of us to things that we're not aware of. And, and this may be directed to the superintendent or to our facilities person, but a couple of those are pretty serious charges. If we're talking about people getting sick and we've got mold and mildew and cockroaches and things like that, school, old schools are, old schools, and they can be very nice and they can be very clean and welcoming and good environments to learn in. We know that and we have some of those, but it's totally unacceptable to have mold, mildew, and cockroaches. That's just not, that, that shouldn't happen. So could somebody in our, you know, in our staff or somebody speak to that in facilities, let us see what's going on there?
Are you?
I'm asking a question.
Right now?
Yeah.
Or, okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Oaks.
I can say that I've, I've been to Lansdale many times, and I don't agree with the characterization of the cleanliness of the building. There are challenges with an old building like that, and we can have to continue to address those. First, I've heard about a concern of a mold problem, but we'll certainly go out and look at that and have our environmental people do some testing and make sure there's not an issue there, but we can certainly go back and look at that, yes.
So you're not aware of any water issues then?
We had some water in the basement this, over this past weekend, but we had water in probably seven or eight different schools over this weekend where we had the extensive rain. So that's something that we can look at as well.
Okay, so I'd just certainly suggest strongly that any, any kind of concern like that in this transition period absolutely should be addressed, and we should do everything that we can to make this facility as, as good as we can.
Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and I would concur, you know, we have other buildings that are probably nearly that old, bluegrass and sequoia and several others, and so, so they certainly deserve the same attention as any other school we have, so I appreciate you checking in into that. And I understand the difficulty in having elementary students in two different schools and the concern that that has for parents. One positive is your, the younger ones are kind of insulated from the, from the state testing, and they can be insulated from that if they're in a different building, which is one positive. But I worry more about if we don't make this decision to, to move the students right now, we're going to continue with kids in the hallways, so that's the problem. So, but I, I do appreciate you both coming to speak and giving us some insight into your school and your community. Thank you.
I see no other lights, so we will take a vote on that. So all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed?
No.
Okay, did you get that? Okay, motion passes. Ms. Cote.
Item ten E, approved request of Simon Youth Foundation to relocate Dr. Paul L. Kelly Volunteer Academy to West Town Mall.
So I hear a. Motion by Ms. Fugit.
Seconded by Ms. Horn.
Okay, any discussion on this item? Ms. Owen.
Mr. Dupler, can you tell us what was found out about the, the distance for selling alcohol?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Owen, thank you, Madam Chair. As you might imagine, there's, there's a fair amount of differing information out there about liquor laws and beer permits and things of that nature. West Town Mall is in the city of Knoxville, and, and there's an ordinance with regard to liquor sales, package stores have to be five hundred feet or greater from property line to property line, from a, from a school specifically. Then there's a different ordinance that covers beer permits. Beer permits have to be at least three hundred feet from a school. That's, that's a little bit more vague because it talks about building lines, so, so that might not necessarily mean property lines. And there's also exceptions, so, you know, this is not a hard and fast rule, this is, this is pretty much a general, a generality at this point. And then, and then you throw in the, there's a Tennessee state license that's for liquor by the drink. If, if a business qualifies for that, then that business can also sell beer and, and could automatically get a beer license, so, and there's no restrictions on that, there's no, there's no distance requirements at all. So what, what we're doing is Russ Oaks and I have talked about it, and he is reaching out to the Simon Youth Foundation, Simon Properties, we're going to try and find out exactly what the situation is out there, and then, then we can report back once we know. And then, and then like I say, the, I mean, I mean, not only could there be state licenses out there which would negate this whole discussion, but, but there also may be exceptions under the, under the city ordinances as well.
Thank you, Mr. Dupler. I just wanted to be sure that we have communicated with Simon Youth so that they are aware before, before we approve something and say, yes, go ahead, and then realize that there may be a law preventing it. Thank you.
Ms. Fugit.
Since I made the motion, I would like to amend the motion to say that we approve this subject to approval involving the liquor and beer licensing and discussion with the Simon Youth Foundation. I don't want us to wait and, and slow this down because, well, let me just be quiet. That was, I've just changed my motion, I need somebody to agree.
I'll second that.
Whoever seconded it, I need to say, will you, okay, thank you. Now may I discuss? Part, part of why I wanted to go ahead and move forward this discussion is Simon is being very generous, they have given us space for an alternative, for a different type of high school, which isn't going to meet the traditional, a lot of the other traditional things that we deal with in high schools. So if it came down to it, I, I, you know, I would ask the law director, is there a way to petition for an exception for a mall school? And so I just want us to go, to sort of go on record saying we're okay with Simon moving the school if we can get those legal issues worked out.
Okay, so we have an amendment on the floor with Ms. Fugit making the motion, Ms. Roundtree seconding it, so we'll vote.
Yeah, it was really a substitute motion, so it's all good.
A substitute?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just substituted, so we're good.
I'm sorry, Ms. Dethridge, did you want to speak to that?
Oh, thank you, I was just saying, I, I think we had a similar situation in, at the Knoxville Center Mall because she had a restaurant downstairs that I think that served beer, and the school was upstairs, so they may already have something in writing, and I was just going to bring that to the attention of the, of the attorney.
Okay, so all in favor of the substitute motion made by Ms. Fugit, say aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, Madam Chair, could I have a clarification before we move to the next item? And that is, on the Lansdale thing, Russ, will you give us a report, will you give the board a report about the condition of the school? Kind of a, a good going over in terms of, and address these issues that have been brought up?
Yes, sir, I can tell you though, if we're going to go back and, and do some environmental testing, that may take several weeks to go, go through that process and get the results back.
Okay, well, I don't know how to do it or when to do it, but it needs to be done this year before we move forward.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. Okay, Ms. Cote.
Item ten F, approved two hundred and sixteen day teacher contract link for priority and CUSP schools, including Austin East Magnet High School, Bell Morris Elementary School, Green Magnet Academy, Lansdale Elementary School, Sarahmore Green Magnet Academy, and Vine Middle Magnet School.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion on this? Ms. Roundtree.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know that we've previously discussed this, but there may be folks here tonight and watching at home that don't understand why we're approving this sort of separate from our future budget process since it goes into school year eighteen, fiscal year eighteen. So if the superintendent wouldn't mind just clarifying the rationale behind that, I would appreciate it.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'd be glad to shed a little bit more light on that, but we've, of course, priority schools and, and CUSP schools, we're working with the state right now on, on ways to, strategies to make sure that those schools don't fall in the bottom five percent, we actually do, do not want them in the bottom ten percent. In terms of the budgetary impact, the cost of this is about one point three million dollars. What we had recommended is that with the vote that was taken on the Leadership Academy that paring the money down considerably to take the funds saved from that agreement in, in addition to funds, we, we don't know yet from the state, but there's, there should be some additional funds, maybe, we won't know until later in the year, but the title funds that we can use, but to come up with the total cost of one point three million dollars. But this would fund approximately nine hundred thousand dollars of the cost and, and actually to use this time for professional development for the staffs and, in terms of the teachers, giving them a little bit more incentive in terms of some extra pay to, to do the work. Work is difficult in all schools and we recognize that. It's very difficult in the priority schools, and just to give our teachers a little bit more incentive to stay because it's important to have consistency in terms of the teaching staffs. And we have, on, on years we have turnover there, then that certainly interferes with that consistency. So we want, we want effective teachers everywhere, obviously, and we want them in our priority schools, and we want to make sure that we can compensate them in a way that they will stay there and also to provide the kinds of professional development that will help them to be more effective in terms of the students that they're working with.
I did, I just had a follow-up comment.
Okay.
Thank you, Superintendent Thomas and Madam Chair. My only follow-up comment to this item is, as we had discussed at our work session, there was quite a bit of overlap between the schools that we would be approving for this extended contract and other funding, including some of the magnet dollars. So while I may support this item, I think that, as I stated at the work session, I look forward to seeing the rationale behind the magnet programming and how it is directly impacting achievement and moving those schools and students forward. Thank you.
Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there a reason that we're approving this now versus during, as during part of the budget cycle?
In, in terms of advertising positions, we've normally given priority schools first opportunity on advertising positions. And what we're gonna, what we're going to do this year, because of the timing and we have, we're opening two new middle schools, we're going to post, if this is approved this evening, we're, we're going to post positions on Friday morning. Dr. Drummond is ready to release that, and we have teachers at some of the schools where we're moving students, and they're concerned, and rightfully so, about a, a job. And I just want to say too, that the teachers that are, that are doing a good job are going to have a job. Actually, when we look at staffing, we talked a little bit about this, this morning, the staff is, we've got, we actually need more positions than we have teachers right now at the middle school level. So teachers that are doing an effective job right now may not be in the same building that they're in this year, but we want to make sure that, that they, we relieve those fears that they're not going to have a job. So I know, I know how that is and the concern there. We want, we want to just reassure as much as we possibly can that jobs are going to be there and we'll get them posted and, and folks can go through the interview process and, and then we'll kind of go from there.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other lights on, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
Item ten G, discussion and action on Leadership Academy Committee Proposal, and if approved, a memorandum of understanding will be prepared by the Knox County Law Department and the University of Tennessee General Counsel to accurately reflect the proposal and to be signed by the board chair.
Ma'am, I, I want to restate the motion, because this isn't really a motion.
Oh, you're going to make, okay.
Yeah, so yeah, because this is discussion and possible action, so.
Yes, we need a motion.
I would like to make a motion that says approval, move to approve the Leadership Academy Committee Proposal as presented, and then add the rest of the language, and if approved, blah, 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 because discussion and possible action is not really a motion.
Okay. Do I have a second? Ms. Fugit's made a motion, seconded by Ms. Dethridge. We'll open the floor up for discussion.
Madam Chair, we have one speaker signed up for public forum on this item.
Yes.
Candace Banister.
Candace Banister, Knox County resident. Good evening, Madam Chair and school board members. On Monday evening at the public forum, a speaker felt she was able to confidently speak for the silent majority of those underrepresented voices. I won't pretend to speak for all of the silent majority, but I will say that many people question whether or not it is safe to voice their opinions regarding the Leadership Academy for fear of repercussions or retaliation. There are Leadership Academy administrators in almost every school building across Knox County. I am sure you have found that those lucky enough to attend are certainly one hundred percent supporters and may not like for the Leadership Academy to be questioned. It could be that if the underrepresented voices speak up, they could be given early morning bus duty, afternoon daycare pickup duty for the remainder of the year. Just to be clear, I'm against any continuation of the partnership with the Leadership Academy and with good reason. I have, as I have emailed each of you my concerns, I will not repeat them here tonight in the limited time I have to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will have discussions starting with, I'm sorry, with Ms. Roundtree and then Ms. Fugit.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to state before the discussion begins that I will be recusing myself from the vote on this agenda item. As you may recall, I did vote on this when it came up before the board the first time, but since then there has been a change in the hierarchy within the college. Some of you may know that Dean Ryder is out on extended medical leave, and so my direct supervisor within the college, Dr. Sherry Bell, is currently acting dean, and so she would be the person that would also be negotiating as a member of the college with any agreement that this board brought forth, and that because she is my direct supervisor, it has a direct financial tie to my graduate assistantship and stipend through the university. So I wanted to go ahead and state that on the record before the discussion began. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Roundtree, Ms. Fugit.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not really much about this, I think this has been talked about and I can pretty much count noses and tell you how the vote probably is going to go based on the way we've talked about this for several months. I just want to address a concern that I heard from our speaker, because I've been hearing it for seven and a half years, that there is fear, no matter what the issue is, anytime a teacher or a staff member feels like they can't speak, it doesn't matter who the superintendent is, who the principal is, anything, people are afraid that if they come and speak to the board that there's going to be ramifications. So I, I just really think that that's something that we've got to think about as a system because it doesn't matter what the issue is, it doesn't matter who's sitting in that chair, it doesn't matter what principal's in her building. That is something I hear over and over and over, that there is fear to come speak because someone's going to be punished, and I, and I think that's scary and sad, and I think as you talk about culture, that's something that's got to change because apparently it's historically been a problem, it doesn't sound like it's gotten any better, and, and that troubles me. The only thing I will say before we vote is I'm sure we're going to do a roll call vote, and what everybody needs to know is it takes five affirmatives, and so now we only have eight votes, so it will take five folks to move this forward, so, thank you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Owen?
I just want to agree with Ms. Fugit. I had a contact from a person in the school district who says that the teachers in her school are afraid to come to the meeting, not even to speak to us, just to come and sit in the meeting. So I think that's absolutely something that needs to be addressed, and it didn't start yesterday, it didn't start eight years ago. It has been ongoing for a very, very long time.
Okay. Was there anything else, Ms. Owen? Your light was still on. Okay. I see. Ms. Hill?
I would just like to kind of summarize some of the things that I've heard. It probably isn't going to change any minds, but the, one of the first things that was brought to us about the Leadership Academy and the reason that we needed to revamp and relook at it was because the contract that we currently had was not legitimate, and the law department recommended that we, that we make that change. And the Board did that, and I certainly, I did support that move. Since that time, and even before that time, I have looked closely at every or everything brought to me as far as the good and the bad about the Leadership Academy and whether it should continue or not continue. In the interest of full disclosure, I think most of you know that I retired from the school system. I was a part of the system when the Leadership Academy began. I, I know many people that, good people, that applied and were denied, and I couldn't understand why because their credentialing was excellent. I saw, I saw the attitude that began because of this and really seemed to continue for several years, and I understood it. I understood it because I saw it happen. So when I began this process, I was skewed. I was very skewed in it. I started making a list of all of the positives and the negatives, things that kept being brought to us over this academy and whether to continue or not continue it. The contract being the first one, which this Board has taken care of. The second huge one was the cost involved. I was alarmed that we were spending almost a million dollars a year for the academy. I did feel like that might be money, certainly well spent elsewhere. And we, and our superintendent, at the request of the Board, came up with an alternate proposal that virtually eliminated the cost to Knox County schools. So that was certainly a barrier that faced us, that was addressed, and it sounds like has been remedied. Then this Board decided to assign a committee to look at the pros and cons of Leadership Academy, if it were to continue, could it continue with a revamping. I commend the work that they, that the committee did. I know that Ms. Owen and Ms. Horn worked long and hard to look specifically at many, many of these issues. My feeling was that the proposal that was brought to us, for the most part, addressed many of the concerns that had been brought to us by teachers and even some administrators and people that had been very against the academy. There was the concern about transparency. I will be first to admit, and I saw that transparency was horrible. It was not good. In essence, the decision-making was pretty well narrowed to one or two people. That was not right. That should not have happened. But that was then, and this is now. It did happen. Our committee, in its wisdom, brought to us a very transparent process, that if this were to continue, that it would be, it would be open. There would be communication from beginning to end with any candidates that decided to apply, and that the decision-making would be not one person or even two people, but it would be upon the recommendation about, from Knox County schools, of a committee put together by our superintendent. Also, the communication that would go every step of the way to all applicants, which I totally see as a step up, as a growth type of exercise, if you will, for any of our men and women that are wanting to go into leadership. So the issue about transparency and how it occurred and who picked and all, the committee brought us a solution that addressed that. The, the issue with the non-disclosure of UT financials to us, the spending, the difficulty that we had getting the curriculums, I didn't like any of that. I didn't, I didn't think that was, that was good for anyone. I still don't know why we've not been able to get that information. But I do know that, as the committee addressed this, that one of the fixes, so to speak, was for us to have a person, a leadership director or whoever this person is going to be, which I understand is going to be recommended to us regardless of whether the academy continues or not, that this person would be front and center in working hand-in-hand with UT, and that this transparency, in fact, would occur. You know, none of us can change what's happened, but, but we do have a chance to fix things and move forward. So I do feel like, even though that was a real blackballing issue in the past, that there is very real potential from this point forward to, to address that concern. The committee also brought us a multiple pathways solution, which is marvelous. One of the real complaints about the Leadership Academy was that if you weren't a part of it, then you would not go into administration. That may be true or not true, but the fact of the matter is, it is no longer, if the academy continues, the way that it is. There have been multiple pathways that have been introduced so that people that do not get into the academy will not feel blackballed, will not feel excluded, and will still have a way to grow and develop and, and become leaders in our school. I heard that we were spending all this money to train all of these people, that, and then we were losing them. The statistics show, thanks to recent numbers I got from Ms. Drummond, that we currently have 81 Leadership Academy graduates in our system. We have lost five. Now, that's a pretty reasonable retention rate, no matter how you look at it, plus the fact that one of the committee recommendations, which I also thought was outstanding, that anyone that goes into the academy will have to pay a penalty, if you will, if they do not fulfill a contract for X number of years, that they will have a payback in that. So even though that retention was not the problem that it was initially presented to be, as I just said, if it is, in fact, an issue in the future, it has been addressed. I still, even after all that, kind of struggled because I, we all know the elephant in the room, and that is who's, who is leading the academy and the really horrendous time that our school system has had in the last few years because of some of the decisions that were made and part of relating to the academy. So of these 81 graduates that are still with us, I had personally talked to 16 of them. So that's not quite 20% that I made the effort to go and speak to. Many of them I knew personally from years past, some of them that were brand new to me, and asked them, what was good about this? What was bad about this? The biggest negative that I heard from years past was the extremely competitive nature that they felt like that they walked into, that they were going to have to, it was made very clear that they were competing with the people they were looking at. And, and that was kind of a new concept. Many times, that competitiveness, which is very real in the business world, is sometimes not quite so obvious or dealt with in, in the school setting. But they did find that disturbing. They did share, though, that in spite of that, that the camaraderie that they felt with their other cohorts and the fact that everyone was looking toward common goals was a very positive thing, that they were able to grow through each other. And that was one of the benefits of being able to come together one day a week. They all indicated they appreciated the ability to have the classroom time. They appreciated the fact that there were other districts involved. Because we are not an island, and we do not need to allow ourselves to become an island. Just because other theories are presented when you are in a graduate program, other methods of doing things are presented, does not mean that it automatically becomes you and who you are and what type of a leader you're going to become. So contrary to some of the negative I heard from the graduates, I did hear that this was a, more of a positive thing. With these 80 leadership folks that we have in the system right now, we have certainly ones that are stronger than others. We have that, no matter what your educational background might be, it's there. We have probably as many different leadership styles in those 81 people as we, as exist in any other system. The, the fear, the talk about, about the Broad way, the Broad Academy, which is a big elephant in the room, did not appear to infiltrate our system the way that, that it was presented. And especially now that we have new leadership, we are two years out from this, and I am not seeing that, that this one particular way of doing things has become the end-all-be-all. In fact, if anything, I, from these folks that I talked with, they recognized much of the downfall in that particular methodology and chose not to adopt it. Y'all, we can't, we can't run from this type of thing. We've got to embrace what's out there and learn from it and see what's good, what's bad, you know, what's working, what's not working. And to, to run from that, quite frankly, I don't feel like is growth-producing. We need to be open. We need to know what's out there. Knowledge is power, and just because you have the knowledge does not mean that you have to use what's been given. You still have the ability to make your own, own decisions, and I do think many of our graduates have done that. I have even heard, which troubles me greatly, that several of these graduates feel really almost insulted by the attitude that others have shown, the fact that because they went through this academy, that, that they are tainted. I would challenge every Board member sitting here to, to look at the Leadership Academy graduates in their district, and might there be a few that you don't agree with? I would say that number would be the same with those that did not go to the academy who still are going to have disagreements. But I do know that some of our finest principal leaders are graduates of the academy. I think we need to be very cautious, whatever the decision is tonight, that, that we don't allow that stigma to be there, which has clearly been out there and indicated by, by several people on this Board and also in our schools. And probably the last thing that I have heard, and I really am trying to address every issue that has been sent to me through emails, was that it's not fair that 10 people get, you know, scholarship for graduate program, and, and everyone else had to go and pay their own way. Just because we cannot put Chinese or Arabic in every high school, just because we cannot have an L and N STEM program going on in every high school, does not mean that we should deny the few students that we can give it to because we can't give it to everyone. And I feel like that same thought process is following up with this LA, with the Leadership Academy program. Would we all love to have our graduate, graduate work paid for? Absolutely, we would. I mean, that would have, I did my graduate work at UT, and I'm telling you, it was a tough road a hoe. I get that, but to deny the few that we can give this to because we can't do it for everyone, again, I apply it to what we're doing in our schools. We don't deny all students a benefit because we can only give it to a few. I did hear a couple of very touching stories from one current participant and one that graduated about two years ago, and it was not the gentleman that addressed us several months ago, about how life-changing this has been for them because they had graduate degrees, they were not in administration, they had no shot at getting into administrative roles because they had young families, they were heavily in debt. Graduate school was not an option, and this has been a path for them. I just, I just do not agree that if this is something we can do even for 10 of our, our folks in our school system, that that is a benefit that, quite frankly, I just think would be a mistake to take away. And again, this is, you know, this is Terry Hill speaking. So I sail that to say, I think we have been given a chance for a do-over, to fix everything that was wrong. And clearly, whether you agree with the methodology or not, it has not infiltrated our system. And And clearly, whether you agree with the methodology or not, it has not infiltrated our system. And I would not have any reason to think that that is going to change because, in fact, the men and women that are chosen for this academy do have minds of their own, can decide what works for them, and that's the leadership that they can bring to our system. So I hate to deny any kind of a benefit, even if it's just for a few of our employees. So having said that, as much as I know and I understand and I hear all of the heartache that has occurred in this system over these last years, and some of it being blamed on Leadership Academy, I think the time has come for us to move forward and not just destroy a program that in fact is of benefit to several individuals and to our system as a whole, that is in fact a partnership that I personally think bodes well for Knox County schools to have this type of affiliation with a flagship university. So that's the reason I will support this, not because of what's happened in the past, but because I feel confident of what can happen in the future if we allow this to continue.
Okay, Ms. Dethridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Terri pretty much put it out there. Because my thing is, the task force worked very hard. I could sit in on a lot of those sessions, and they didn't agree on everything, but they did come together and came up with a proposal that we asked them to go research, put together, work with UT, and bring it to us. They may not agree, but once you're on a committee or a task force, when you finally make a decision, I would say that you support that decision when you present it. That's just me. That's how I am. I may lose the battle, but I'm going to support the decision. And I think that if they brought us a proposal back and we asked them to do what we asked them to do, and we can live with it, and it is something that has been a benefit, at least I know, to bringing in minorities and more women and putting them in. I know it has been a benefit to my district because we've got one at Houston, Green, Vine, Austin East, they all came through the Leadership Academy. And I, and they all have talked, I have talked to all of them, and they have told me what benefit they have gotten from this experience. And I would hate to think that we're going to let some, something that's going to keep us from looking at the future, as Terri has said, something that's going to move this system and our children forward, and what we're trying to do as far as teachers, leadership, administrators, making them stronger and making them, and we should brace the opportunity in order to, for, not only for what can be, but what should be. I think a lot of things that the task force brought back is good things that if we adopt these and move forward, it only makes the system better. But I don't believe in cutting off the nose despite the face. And that's what we're doing if we don't really, really look at the Leadership Academy and what it can do for our system, not because of what is included. Sometimes you have to just look over that, get over it, and move on. I'm like Ms. Hill. We can't keep dwelling on the past. We've got to think about what can be, what should be, and what will be. If we continue, I don't want to cut off relationship with UT because that's where most of our teachers and administrators come from. Why would we not want to continue that support with each other, with that collaborative effort with each other? I mean, it's just, we have to open up our minds to what can be, what should be. And if we cut it off now, then next thing you know, the individual that you don't like leaves, then we've already given away this opportunity because of one individual. That one individual does not make or break this program, whether we like it or not, they do not. There's more to this program than that, and we need to just go look beyond that, get over it more so than, and move on. I agree with Ms. Hill. There's time when we have to just go ahead and do the right thing for the school system. The superintendent is willing and ready to work on all the issues, willing to do whatever we need to do to make it better, and like, and if you have a, we've got, there's teachers that are not great. So you're not going to have administrators that are all great. There's going to be some things that come through that we're not going to be our top choice. It's just life. I mean, that's part of it. Don't throw away the baby with the water because everybody's not going to be great. That's just part of it. So I know people say, I knew you was going to support it, but I am because it has been an avenue for a lot of my principals that's doing a great job with my students in my district, and I will going to continue to support that effort. And I want to make sure that this is not beginning to turn up some things that has been beneficial to what we're trying to do in Knox County.
Ms. Owen, I think yours is the last slide on.
I can be fast, I think. I want to clarify, the committee's work was not to make a decision or to make a recommendation. The committee did not come to an agreement that this was the best plan out there. The committee's work was to come up with the best plan we could within the parameters we had to work with. So that's limited before we even started. So I want to be sure that everyone understands that this is not a recommendation of the committee. The committee made no recommendation. The committee worked to negotiate the best plan we could make within the parameters that we had. That is not a recommendation. I would also like to point out that we are not destroying a program. The program is there. It's been made very clear to us over and over that they don't need us. When this program was created, it was created because the superintendent at the time had the money and the desire and the power to create it. He is in a different place now, and he still has the money and the power and the desire to continue the program with or without us. He doesn't need us. Something that I brought up to the committee and probably should have brought to the whole board a while back is a concern about, it's exactly what Ms. Hill said, that some of our graduates are concerned that they are not well thought of. And I would say that's very valid because there are some very rude things that they are called. And if you look at state law and the definition of incompetence, one of the parts of that definition is the inability to command respect from subordinates or to secure cooperation of those with whom the teacher must work. So if we are putting our folks in a situation, choosing just these elite few, and putting them in a situation to set them up for that, I think I need to ask myself if I'm setting them up for failure. And I think it's very, I think the concerns both ways are very valid, from their perspective and from those who are working with them. We need to really consider our place in that. And the very last thing I want to point out are just some numbers. Oh, no, I have one little short thing. On October 30th, when this was presented to, when the findings were presented to us, Clint Sattler clarified the findings, and he said that the finding is not that the district would benefit from the Leadership Academy per se, but from some kind of principal development. Some kind of principal development, there is a lot that we can do in-house for a lot more people, for a lot less money, without having them go get another degree or put them in a situation where they feel that they have to do something. They don't have to be pressured to feel like they have to apply. Between the time that we voted to end that MOU until today, I have not had a single contact from anyone supporting the program, not one. I have had 25 contacts in writing from people who strongly oppose any kind of Leadership Academy. I did not track those that I spoke with in person or things that I read on social media, but they were numerous, and they were also all in opposition. If I go all the way back to the weeks prior to our December vote and count those also, I've had about 45 written contacts that were strongly opposed to the Leadership Academy and five in favor who contacted me in writing. And also, I didn't track those I spoke with in person, but the opposition was far greater than the support. The numbers are not the only thing that's important here, but because beyond the simple numbers, there's another distinction in those groups of people. With the notable exception of Reverend Butler, and I wanted to talk to him before I put his name out there, but he is the exception, so I think that will be okay with him. With the notable exception of Reverend Butler, every other person who has contacted me in support of the Leadership Academy also has a pecuniary interest in the Leadership Academy. So we need to decide whether we are voting for the financial interests of a few or if we are looking at the interests of the district as a whole.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I'd like to call for a question. I think Ms. Fugit hit it on the head when she said that we pretty well knew how we were going to vote, you know, their lights on, you know. When my term comes, I could speak for 15 minutes. It's not going to change anything.
I have a clarifying question on the vote.
That would be, that would be okay, I guess.
Thank you. My clarifying question is, this agreement is for one year. I believe our conversation the other night was that this agreement that we, if passed, would be for one year. I just want to make sure that that is what we talked about because we talked about there could be opportunity to revisit it. That's all I want to know. Am I voting on a one-year?
Thank you. Mr. McMillan has called for the vote.
Can I get an answer? Am I voting on one-year? Or what am I voting on?
I'm sorry, I thought you knew that.
I was making a statement, but I would like some nodding of heads.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Fugit. Yes, it's my understanding that from the discussion the other night and from the committee discussion that if approved, that this would be for one year, and that would be what our department and the UT General Counsel would put in writing as well.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to ask Ms. Cottney to take a roll call vote, starting with District 1, and a vote of yes will be to, an affirmative to continue the Leadership Academy, and a vote of no will be to end that. So, Ms. Cottney?
Ms. Dethridge.
I'm going to vote, but I'm going to say this. It's very unfair for Mike to call a question before the other member of the task force had an opportunity to speak, but I'm going to vote, but it's unfair. Now, am I going to vote for this? Yes.
Ms. Owen?
No.
Mr. Norman?
No.
Ms. Fugit?
Yes.
Ms. Horn?
No.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
No.
Ms. Bowns?
No.
That's five no votes and three yes votes.
So the motion fails. Ms. Cottney?
No. Go ahead, Ms. for the next one.
Item 10H, approve request of Gibbs Middle School to engage in an agreement with the Valor Academy in Nashville, Tennessee, to implement the Compass model of social and emotional success skills with their students.
I'll make a motion in favor of this, and if there are questions that members have, I believe Ms. Jackson will address those questions.
Okay, so Mr. McMillan has made a motion, and Mr. Norman has seconded it. All right, there, and then we'll have discussion. Ms. Fugit?
Thank you. My question, just so I, for everyone to understand, I assume this is being brought to us because it is time-sensitive and it did not make the agenda, which goes to my bigger question of, we have got to do better about schools getting things in time for the agenda-setting meeting. I'm not opposed to this, but I think it happens from time to time that, I don't know how it happens, but we just really, I don't want to punish students because an administrator or somebody didn't get it on time, but people have got to do better.
Okay. Mr. Dupler?
I can, yes, I can address that. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Fugit. I can say that the system has gotten better about deadlines and issues coming before our office. I can also say, in this particular instance, it is my understanding that this is time-sensitive.
Oh, I'm sure it is.
And that this is time-sensitive on the other end, and it was not within the control of the Gibbs Middle School administration, so.
Well, I also understand we had snow, ice, and flu. I get that. I'm just saying, in general, that's why.
Our office agrees with your sentiment that if we can avoid these emergencies, we would like to, yes.
Okay, Ms. Roundtree.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Because we did just have this in front of us when we walked into the meeting, I did just a brief, some brief research, and for those of you that don't know, Valor Academy is a charter school that's in Nashville. And so my concern is, when I flip through this, the last paragraph, and I don't see Ms. White here, she probably couldn't be here this evening, to address this, I'll address it to you, Ms. Jackson. She says, and I quote, "I'm committed to the work of integrating social and emotional learning and competencies into our academic competencies and school culture." I think those things are all well, fine, and good, except for, from what I have seen from the Valor Academy, I'm not sold that they have the experience in pedagogy to say that they're the experts in this area. So if you would please address that for myself and the board.
Sure. So Ms. White and I had a chance to go and observe the work and have some conversation, and we would be able to establish our own pedagogy. It's the structure and the support and putting the structures in place that we would be working with Compass in order to get the support there. This is actually something that would be built and designed by the teachers along with Ms. White.
Okay. Can I go to Mr. McMillan? I'll cut back to you. Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say that you're right, that Ms. White is out of town. I spoke with her, I don't know, a couple hours or so before the meeting began, and she could not be here. And I believe that it only came to her attention, she wasn't blaming anybody, but it only came to her attention yesterday in filling out the proper forms. So I agree with what Mr. Dupler said. I think we're doing better. But I agree wholeheartedly with what Ms. Fugit said. I've been one of the biggest critics of not getting things in. And, you know, it may come down to the point where we have to, we, you know, like the superintendent, has to at some point invoke some consequences if people continuously refuse to abide with rules. Otherwise, you know, it doesn't do any good. The rule's not any good. So, you know, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. And I will say that I have been in conversation with the Law Department and Mr. Dupler because it puts a, and Ms. Cottney, it puts a real hardship on our staff, central office staff, and everybody else. But I think we have, in good faith, made an attempt and are seeing less, but we still have room for improvement. Ms. Roundtree?
I'll yield to Ms. Dethridge. She hasn't spoken.
I'm sorry, Ms. Dethridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my question is, this is to, for the teachers that we don't have yet, I mean...
And that's been one of the challenges, but they are, when they go to their first training, she is hoping to have her, some of her teachers hired, and so they will be able to...
In March?
Well, they may go to the first training in March, but then they don't have to have any product in place until the summer. So as they learn this process, they will be taking teachers, and that's been a very important component to Ms. White, is that the teachers are involved in the development of this, because this is not just about taking care of students, social, emotional, but it's also about taking care of teachers. And so it includes them in that process.
So when we talk about taking care of teachers, it's not going to be a part of what we're already doing as far as positive, emotional, and whatever else is in here? That's what we're, social and emotional training initiative, is that not what we're trying to implement throughout Knox County already?
It is, and we're partnering with Ms. Mas- It is, and we're partnering with Missy Massey's office. Rebecca Bitner has been working with us, and the state has just released social, emotional standards as well, and so look, and tie right in with PBIS, restorative practices. So, this will be an opportunity for them to make that part of the experience of teaching students, that personal responsibility, how they learn to solve problems, solve conflict, and...
So, we won't have PBIS out there?
We will. It will be part of their PBIS and their restorative practices process.
Okay. And the school funding is coming from internal school funding for, from the general fund or from the funding that goes to Gibbs Middle School?
So, I had an allocation that went to each middle school, well, to each of our schools in the district for professional learning, and this is how Ms. White is choosing to use her funds. Both Gibbs Middle and Hardin Valley Middle's funds are having to sit in my account right now because they don't have school accounts, but they're, they have professional dollars just like the other schools do, and this is, this is how she's choosing to use them.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I appreciate the information, Ms. Jackson. I just, I have some concern, and this is, just speaks to a broader issue. I emailed Ms. Thompson and Ms. Jackson both that, you know, I don't know what the conversation is from the superintendent and our leadership team about the discussion and the thought process that goes into purchasing pre-made curricula, whatever that may be, because as much as we would all love a silver bullet, there isn't one out there. I mean, there's no peer-reviewed research on iReady and the fact that it works and supports kids. You know, we need to be focusing on programs and pedagogy that are supported by research that shows they actually work instead of whatever the shiny new thing that comes down the pike. And that certainly isn't a critique on you, Shannon, I hope you know that. That's just a general conversation, I think, that we need to think about as a board. And I will say, it did concern me, seeing that this was really a product of a charter school that has no ed folks in their background. So, I appreciate that the teachers are going to have a hand in building whatever this program is. I just hope there's some more thoughtful consideration in the future of how these limited funds are spent and sort of talking through those decisions. Thank you.
Ms. Owen?
I'd just like to point out and be sure that Mr. Dupler sees on page two, the second paragraph, "This is also an agreement on behalf of the schools in my organization participating in camp to facilitate the development of data sharing agreement that will enable our organization to share student-level performance data with the camp." That's concerning. Valor Transcend will use such data in its management and evaluation of the Compass Camp program. So, though we're looking at not a huge amount of money and we're only looking at a few people, we are also committing our student data to this charter school, and I think that is concerning. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you.
Should I speak to that?
Ms. Jackson, did you?
Would you like me to speak to that?
Sure. Go ahead.
That is something that we talked about with our REA department, and they would be able to mask that data so that it cannot be tracked to any particular student. The theory of action here is that if we invest in our teachers and our students' emotional, social, emotional, that we would see increases in student achievement as well.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Dupler's got to address it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Owen. When I reviewed the contract today, I was, I saw that information in there, Ms. Owen, and you'll note in the next paragraph, it talks about FERPA, which is what I was concerned with, to make sure that privacy was honored and that all parties would be complying with FERPA. So, I do believe what Ms. Jackson is talking about is the case, is that, you know, although some data would be shared, privacy and confidentiality would be maintained.
I think the concern is still that we are, we are sharing our data with a charter organization that we have said that we don't support. So, that's, that's how it is still.
Ms. Jackson, could you give me a little bit of the history of how this began? I mean, we're here at this point tonight, and I saw quickly reading through the notes that you provided us, that you and two others from our district went down to attend something in November, but how did this come on the radar, so to speak? Or...
So, I became involved when Ms. White asked me if I would go with her, that she has been looking for a way to bring together student achievement and the culture of a building, that, you know, PBIS, restorative practices, social, emotional learning needs to be paired with academic learning, and that this was something that she would like for me to look at with her. And so, I went along with someone from Missy's department, and we talked about what would work in our context and what wouldn't, and learned that we would have the flexibility to design the program in such a way that would meet with Ms. White's vision for Gibbs Middle, and it would really provide coherence to the school around, these are not initiatives that are at odds with each other, these are initiatives that support each other. So, that was exciting to me because there's limited time to do development, and putting your attention on the social, emotional well-being of our teachers and our students seemed like something that we really needed to be able to try and to test, to see if that was making the changes that we thought it would.
And I had one other question. I noticed down here at the end of the bottom of the page, under internal capacity commitments, faculty circles, sixty minutes, one time a week with host staff present. Is this in addition? I mean, what is that commitment for staff? I mean, they already have a lot of meetings after school and faculty meeting. Would this take place during the faculty meeting or separate from the faculty meeting?
So, that's a place where we've been very clear that it has to align with all our Board of Education policies, so we will not be infringing on meeting time. We also said that it would be within the confines of the school day. So, she's looking, she's attached a schedule for the building so that...
That was on the, yeah.
It's on the very last page, where she is structuring it, so there will probably be a little flexibility around that full sixty minutes, but they will have a faculty circle that is about them being able to get together and celebrate the things that are going well in their building and to bring to her the concerns and things that they feel like they need to address as a faculty.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know whether this will help or not, but in talking to Ms. White briefly, we talked a little bit about what she was attempting to do, and I sort of, from what she said, she talked in terms of bringing kids together and no matter what their backgrounds, and letting them share their successes, and that she believed from what she'd seen and read about these programs, that it would be one of those things that would, one would feed off the other. There wasn't a negative to it. It wasn't condemning anybody. It was looking at the ones that have been successful and trying to raise the level of the ones that have not as a result of using these as center figures, for lack of a better term. Thank you.
Ms. Hill?
Is the total cost, is there no charge for the program?
That's correct.
So, it's the travel?
It's the travel.
All right. I'm also looking here in step two, though, and is this, that you're asking for four additional days of teacher contract to be added to the budget?
It's the third bullet.
I see the bullet. That's not something that I'm prepared to speak on. I'm sorry. I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
It's a part of this Compass Camp application that the ask is for, for additional days. That's a little bit concerning.
Maybe the super, how would that be handled, Mr. Thomas? Because first, you're asking them to come back in July, four days earlier than the other teachers in the district, and then at, under contract time, so added to the budget? What does that look like?
Yes, obviously, a cost involved in bringing people in four days, what both schools have asked for is an additional, for one year, an additional four days, because again, this is the first time the staff is coming together to work with the students. And I think, Mr. Spencer, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe in terms of the cost, and of course, it's a budgetary matter, the budget hasn't been approved yet, but I think what, if I'm not incorrect about this, weren't the four days requested built into those costs that you presented to the board?
That's correct. It was part of the incremental cost of opening the two new schools for one year only. And that was a request of each principal of each of the two schools.
As a follow-up, if I may?
Go ahead.
It also goes on to say, "We may also require that eight hours of the district require twelve hours of unscheduled in-service be dedicated to Compass training." So, this would be an additional eight hours that we would be requiring of our teachers to attend?
That's not additional hours. Every, everyone is required to earn twelve unscheduled in-service hours, and so eight of those hours would be towards the Compass training, and then the other four would be used for other training.
But this states that that will be a requirement of those teachers?
Yes.
That they, this is what they have to do with eight of their twelve hours?
That is correct.
Is participate in this training. And then it also goes on, and I think this was addressed about, and I apologize, but just seeing this, I'm just, on the job, professional learning, the second and fourth Tuesday of every month, so twice a month, teacher plan is going to be totally dedicated to this?
I don't think she's planning to do it as their entire plan. I think, and that's one of the reasons why she's doing twice a month, is to break that time up so that they have the majority of their plan period, but they have some of it for their circle.
Okay. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm concerned also about the time, you know, I think, and to, as a couple of people have made the point about their, the day already being full, so I'm concerned about the ability to sustain those hour-long weekly meetings for an entire staff together. Have other programs that are similar to this been considered? Or did she just find this one and...
This is the one that she brought to me and that we looked at together. I think when we witnessed it taking place, the faculty had a tremendous amount of unity as a staff. They understood the direction their students were headed and the supports that they needed. They understood the supports that each other needed, and they had some great strategies for looking at what was going on in their school and solving the problems in their school together. And so, that's what made this an exciting process to her.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other lights up. Ms. Hill?
So, because there's no faculty in place, this is not anything that is, has been run by the faculty. This is, this is a, an independent decision by the administrator to commit all this teacher time to this program. I'm assuming if it passes, that as she interviews, she will make it very clear that this is the expectation of these teachers?
That was her intent. Her intent was to make sure that anybody who was applying knew that this was the direction that the school was going and that they would have full awareness of what they were, of how this was going to operate. She was uncomfortable with that, too, that, you know, she wanted faculty to be able to be part of that buy-in and part of the process. I think because they get to design it, that that is, that's helpful in that cause and that they will have some say in that structure around what the social, emotional competencies are and how they, how they go through that process.
Not designing it, though, if it starts in March?
The first training is in March.
Okay. Ms. Hill, if you're finished, I'll go over to Ms. Dethridge. Ms. Dethridge?
One question. So, I'm just going to ask this. Now, we have been told by Miss Massey that there's going to be a lot of training on a lot of things we're implementing in the next couple of years, and this is going to be on top of that, and it's going to be mandatory. I'm trying to figure out how they're going to get all this in. I'm just sitting here thinking about it, and I don't know. Now, I know it's a principal's decision, and they're going to have to work that out, but listening to all the things that we're trying to implement within the next couple of years, it's just seem like this is going to be mandatory and it's going to be every two, twice a week or twice a month or whatever. I'm just trying to figure out how that's going to... Boards are already talking about so much demanding on the teachers. I'm just trying to figure out, is this going to cause a lot more of stress, for lack of a better word, before they even get to the school?
I think the way that Ms. White was seeing this was it brought coherence to the different initiatives. So, this is how they would get job-embedded PBIS and restorative practices training, and we'd be working alongside the restorative practice trainers and the PBIS trainers so that it was, that this is the training that they'll get. They won't have to go anywhere else to get that training and to be implementing that practice, and they'll have the time to work together and have the discussions around how it's going and to resolve the problems around that.
So, this will look different in Gibbs Middle than it will other schools?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Roundtree?
Madam Chair, the only other thing that I wanted to, I guess, ask a question about, and Shannon and I know you're having to field these since Ms. White is not here, but, so on the internal capacity commitment, it talks about specifically allocating time per week for the school leader implementation. So, I'm just wondering how, because you all went to Valor, what that looks like and what the scholar circles look like, and then I guess, what's the best way to put this? So, I'm not sure, so how is, how is what you all saw there, you know, how can you attribute to that, to a program working versus the fact that this is a charter school that plays by a whole other set of rules? I guess that's the best way for me to put that.
Sure. I think, to me, what was exciting was seeing the scholar circle. We were able to witness a couple of them and to watch them engage, and they had strategies for, they were learning the language of how do you bring up a problem, how do you talk about a problem, how do you go back and forth on that problem? It was advisory, but in a way that was very structured for them to really build their ability to problem-solve. They shared work. There were students who brought work that they wanted to share in their circle and talk about what part of that work was a struggle for them and what part of that work was a success and what their next steps in their learning was. And that was something where, what we saw with the students is a real sense of self-efficacy and ownership of their work and a confidence with their ability to talk about where they wanted to progress in their learning.
Okay. Thank you. And then just as a, I see someone else's line, I'll be quick. Just as a quick follow-up to this, so my other concern is mandating, and I think Ms. Hill was trying to get at this, but I could be wrong, mandating that the eight hours of their twelve hours of in-service is going to go to this, when you may have a teacher that is, I'll use myself as an example. So, if I was in a K5 classroom, while I could be certified in that, I really would need some PD and strengthening in math because that is not my strongest area of, you know, making sure that I'm communicating those skills well. And so, I guess I am worried, too, about it's going to limit, really, staff development to strengthen themselves in the area where they may have a weakness. So, I don't know if you can speak to that.
Well, since content is my specialty, I was curious about that as well, and that's one of the things I talk to the teachers about, because they're spending their PD time doing this, and so we would have to, we still have the district learning days, we still have content supervisors doing the scheduled in-service time, and then we have the four hours that they would be engaging in the learning, and we have the coaches and other people who can go and help them in the classrooms. But what resonated with me was the camaraderie within the faculty. The teachers there, especially the new ones, did not feel alone or isolated because they had the circle structure. They had people that they could immediately go to and... They had people that they could immediately go to and get some support, you know, at the point of need, rather than waiting for a PD opportunity to arise at a district level.
Thank you.
Mr. Norman, I think we will conclude with you. There are no other lights on.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. What's the composition, kind of demographics on Gibbs Middle School? What's it looking like racially, culturally, blah, blah, blah?
The school that I visited? I don't know.
Gibbs.
Oh, Gibbs.
The new school.
Oh, okay. That is, so she put a, let's see. I actually, I don't know the exact statistics for Gibbs Middle School. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, let's just, let's just assume that it's a middle school and it's a normal middle school. And I would think that social, emotional stuff would be way up there on the list of making this middle school work, and it's a brand-new middle school. And this principal thinks it's very important. Good enough for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Norman. Okay, so we have this before us, and there's no other discussion. So all in favor of this, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion passes.
Item 10, aye, discussion of cultural competency training.
We have a, we have a speaker for that. Oh, Anita.
You have a speaker?
We have a speaker.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Mr. Norman. So we have one speaker for this item, Demetrius Jaggers.
My name is Demetrius Jaggers. I'm Knox County. And I'm speaking today as a parent of a first grader and a soon-to-be kindergarten. And I want to just emphasize, I think, the importance of cultural competency training for all Knox County staff, as well as I think it's important for our board members also. There were a few things mentioned on Monday that bothered me as a parent in the discussion around cultural competency and whether or not it was something that would be implemented correctly. And I think this ties into some other issues, too. I think it's important that we do our best, I encourage the board to do its best at prioritizing attendance at the cultural competency and particularly making sure board members are present because as board members, you all make decisions that impact some of those things that happen in our school, and sometimes it could be impacted by implicit bias. I also want to just raise a few examples. On Monday evening, when Dr. Brittany Anderson and Dr. Lawler, Lawder were both here, Mr. Norman, after they were introduced both as doctors, Ms., you referred to Ms. Anderson as Ms. Anderson instead of Dr. Anderson and Ms., and Dr. Law, Lawder as Dr. Lawder. And based on my own experience, I have, I have background in diversity, equity, and inclusion, to me, that is an indication of implicit bias. And so I think that it's important that we be proactive in how we address, considering the growing number of bilingual and immigrant refugee children in our schools, as well as the increasing number of black and brown kids. And having been a parent of a, of a kindergartner who experienced implicit bias in a classroom, I was somewhat taken aback by the statement that in 30 years of being a teacher, that there hadn't been any incidents. I've only been affiliated as a parent of a student for two years, and I can talk about more than one incident of implicit bias. And so I think it's really imperative that this board takes that serious and that it's, that it's implemented as it needs to be. I also think it's important that we do a good job of partnering with the resources in our community, like the University of Tennessee, and know that the University of Tennessee is bigger than one individual and that as a former employee of the University of Tennessee, I have my own challenges and issues. But I know that there are great people at the University of Tennessee doing great work and providing great resources to our community. The last thing I wanted to talk about was some things related to legislative priorities. And I know that, you know, this is the Board of Education and that education issues are of supreme priority, but I also think that there are other issues on a legislative level, both on the state as well as the local level that impact families and students.
Mr. Jaggers?
Yes.
This company just brought it to my attention that right now, we're discussing cultural competency.
Okay.
So if you want to save the remainder of your time and address it in public forum with our legislative priorities, that would be okay.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Norman?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Jaggers, for, for coming and speaking. Indeed, I caught myself right when I said, "Dr. Lawder." I really wanted to say, "Mr. Lawder" and say it equally, but I didn't. Maybe I am. So indeed, the thing that I wanted to bring before the, the board is still a concern that at least we have some kind of method of evaluating how teachers feel about this. And certainly my, my comments when I say, when I said that in my 30 years in the classroom, I had never experienced racism, that, indeed, that was true. And it applied to any faculty member, any staff member, and that was to a suburban, in a suburban school and an inner-city school. Not one time did I ever have any, even an inkling of racism expressed or evident in any way. It's almost understood, in the schools that I'm in, you do not do that. It is not acceptable. And that doesn't apply to kids. Kids are still learning who they are. But in the faculty and in the staff, it is not done. It's never acceptable. So anyway, just wanted to, just wanted to state that or clarify that. Now, the, the situation on Monday is a little bit different from what I've heard. At first, it was three schools, now I think it's four. And as far as I know, it's a seven-hour day in terms of the presentation of this material. And I hope it's good, and I hope it's effective, and I hope the faculty comes out of this, these sessions and they say, "We really benefited from this. We really think we need this. This is gonna make us better. This is gonna make us better teachers." That's what I hope. So, but, but I do think it's necessary for us to get some immediate feedback. And so if the, I think there's a normal sort of generic feedback loop that we have. And so to Ms. Massey and to Ms. Jackson, and thanks to Ter, to Ms. Cottney for accommodating me today. But I hope we've got that and we have some kind of way to get information back to the board, so as soon as we can. So I don't know whether I need to make a motion for that, or maybe Ms. Massey can speak and let us know.
Ms. Massey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Mr. Norman, we, as was mentioned on Monday night, we do have a process that was built into the contract to evaluate the program overall. But based on your request, we're looking at a way to kind of tailor the product that we, the evaluation form that we currently use that tailors it a little bit more specifically to this training.
Okay.
So we'll have something to provide you with some information.
Okay, so at the end of the day?
Yes.
The teachers that go through the program?
Yes.
Will be able to comment and make?
Absolutely.
Make commentary about what they think about what they just experienced?
Yes, sir.
That's all I want. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Massey. Mr. McMillan?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's an excellent idea, Mr. Norman, for us to possibly offer some, some additional questions and, or whatever we're gonna do, as much feedback as we can get. You know, we don't, we don't wanna detain the people, taking, you know, time at the end of the day, that they, they wanna get out of there like everybody else. I understand that, so as long as it's short. But it could prove to be really valuable if, if, if it was structured to where we would see the things that they felt were positive and, and if there was anything that they thought otherwise, that, that they didn't get as much as they'd hoped for or something like, that should be identified as well. The other thing I wanted to mention is, since you mentioned it being seven hours, I think it's important for us to become acquainted with it. I'm sure we're gonna be talking to teachers between now and when we evaluate it. It comes back to us on an annual basis. That's what we agreed to. But, you know, we can only talk to whoever you are, you can only talk to so many teachers. I would like to see if, if, if there would be a possibility that board members could have a video of it to look at from, from time to time, if you wanted to, you know, you might not wanna sit and watch seven hours of it, but, but you might wanna sit and watch maybe an hour or 90 minutes of it and try to get some kind of, and maybe at two or three different times, try to get some kind of a feel of exactly what, how it was going and the consistency and, and whatnot, that otherwise, we probably wouldn't know except just what somebody told us. Is there, is there any possibility of doing that, Mr. Dupler?
Is that your question or Ms. Massey's? Ms. Massey, is that a question you can answer if these are gonna be videoed sessions?
Madam Chair, we are not planning to video the sessions. I think there would be two concerns about that. Number one, well, I'll let UT just answer that from their perspective. But this is a topic that is, you know, you have to have a high level of trust. People have to feel like that they can have open dialogue if it's really gonna be meaningful. I'm not sure that if somebody's concerned about anything that's being said is gonna be something somebody can go back and watch over and over again, that, that we're really gonna have the atmosphere where teachers can really feel like they can have open discussion. And that's just me being completely honest, so.
Well, it's not like we wanna put it on the, the evening news, Ms. Massey. I understand what you're saying, but is there any way that it could be limited, that it could be videoed and limited access to the existing board members, just, just so what I said could take place? I mean, you know, we've got a contract with them, we're using taxpayer funds to pay for the, for the program, and we're talking about a state taxpayer-funded university. So I can understand the copyright aspect of it, but, but by the same token, I think we're, we're entitled to.
So I would address that to Mr. Dupler about whether or not, I would, most things, once we make a recording, can be requested for public records. So I don't know how that would be, how we would cloak that or...
Mr. Dupler?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, you know, obviously, I'd have to, I'd have to dig into the contract and do some research on it, but, but, but as you stated, Mr. McMillan, I mean, you know, it's my understanding that UT has, you know, whether they call it copyrights or, 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 you know, whatever artistic, you know, properties they have, I mean, you know, this is, this is their intellectual property, so, you know, I'm sure that we would need to, to tiptoe around that.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure it would need to be secured or not be made available to, probably to the public, but anyway, thank you.
Okay. Did you want to address anything else, Ms. Massey?
Do you wanna hear, did you want to hear from UT?
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The effectiveness of this type of program is in the interactions between people, not in a video recording of those interactions. The way for the board to experience this would be to come to the session, spend the day with us. It's deep, it's difficult work. It can't be done by watching a 90-minute video. If it could, this would be a lot easier. The RFP specifically forbid any bit of online training, and that was wise because this work does not happen online or through videos. In addition, as we were, as we are doing this work, it would have an amazingly chilling effect if the teachers participating knew the board could be watching them participate in this activity.
So I have a question then, because I would love to come sit in on the seven-hour training, but I already committed to babysitting for two working moms on Monday and won't be able to. But if, and I'm not challenging that, I agree with what you said, it just, there's a little bit of disparity there between inviting board members to come and participate and then watching. I mean, do you feel like that it would be chilling also for a board member to sit in on that? Because I know that is something that has been expressed in Knox County a lot, as I came on the board and tried to sit in on meetings. So what is your feeling on that?
Quite possibly, yes.
Okay.
We need one for us, then.
So...
Does he want us to come or not?
What?
Does he want us to come or not? He just...
No.
I was answering the question, would it have a chilling effect? Yes, it would. If you want, we could possibly add to the contract a training just for the board. We can come. We can do this just for you. That's not part of the original contract. We could iron out how that would work.
Okay, I guess that's something for us to consider. Mr. McMillan, and then I need to get to Ms. Owen and Ms. Coates.
How's she gonna respond to what he said? He just got through asking us, inviting us, and telling us we should sit through the seven hours and participate, but then he says it's gonna have a chilling effect. So I, I mean, which is it? I'm not, I'm not sure what you want.
I do not think it would be effective to have board members there. If you want us to do a training just for you, if you want to sit through the training, we could do that. I think it would be very valuable. We can break it up. We don't have to do, it's one three-hour session and two hour-and-a-half sessions. We could break those up, do them over time.
Well, you know, obviously, most of us don't have seven hours to, to sit through the thing.
Okay, I think he's answered the question, Mr. Norman.
Okay.
So if I can go to Ms. Owen, and then Ms. Coates, and then Ms. Dethridge.
I think a lot of the questions that we're asking should have been asked a really long time ago, should have been asked before the RFP was complete. And also, when, when we discussed the second RFP long ago, one of the discussions was that we would like to have the board trained. We talked about doing that before it went to the staff. And I think if that had happened, we would not be having any of this conversation right I would also say that the question of whether it would have a chilling effect on the staff depends a lot on our relationship with the staff. There are schools in my district where it would not be a good idea at all. There are schools in my district where it would be perfectly fine, I think. And I, I'd say that that's the case for all of us, that there are some places where we feel very welcomed and where they feel that we welcome them. So I, I think whether we are there or not, we need to have that conversation with the principal and the trainers to determine that, if, if that's something that we need to do. I, I think there is, I think there's some misunderstanding in language, and if some of this had come to us as training sooner, we wouldn't be confusing overt and implicit bias. And I think that's really what's happening right now. I don't think we are having an argument about implicit bias. I think we are having an argument about overt bias and confusing it with implicit bias. And that is because we needed some questions answered sooner. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Coates?
I would like to give this to Ms. Dethridge before I speak.
Okay.
Thank you. I understand. I mean, I, I've been through something similar to this when I was working for another company, and it is something that is really personal. Sometimes the conversations get very personal, and it's something that I believe the teachers would like to know that they can have candid conversations without the board being... being in, in the, in the room. I mean, I, having been through that, I know that is just, that's just the way it is. And I do us, I do remember us talking about having this before, but we never made a decision. We never, we never decided to do it. We had discussed it, but we never said we were gonna have it prior to this, this agreement with UT. So that was on the board. So they went on and did what they, they were supposed to do and what we asked them to do. But if we want to, I think that, that's, and the individuals that wanna go through this on the board, that's fine. I've been through it. I don't care to go through it again. I understand, uh, the feeling of it. It's not comfortable, which, you know, which we heard from, uh, Ms. Fugge the other day. It's not a comfortable conversation. And I think the teachers need to have their time to be able to go through this without the board being involved, being, and let them do what they need to do. We hired them to do the job, and if we want to, like Tony said, get some feedback on how effective it is, I agree with that. But I don't think we need to be in the, in the room. I think we let them, need to let them do their job and report back to us how effective it is. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I would just like to express my support of cultural competency, because not only does it affect the teachers, um, it affects students directly. This is about how to build relationships with students. This is about training teachers to be able to effectively handle and develop, um, relationships with people who have struggles every day, that I see every day. Going to an international baccalaureate school, I come in contact with people from all over this world and with all different experiences of life and walks of life. And thankfully, my program has prepared me to be able to appreciate those differences and to be able to recognize my own biases whenever evaluating, um, different cultures. Um, I believe that that is something that has prepared me very well, um, and that I is invaluable to everybody. Um, and I think that this is an opportunity for you, um, to be able to make a decision that allows every single, um, um, teacher and employee to have the opportunity to be able to, um, develop those skills and become more self-aware. So here are three reasons I believe that it is a necessity to be able to allow this training to occur, not only for, um, teachers, but for the future of this district. This will impact students. They will learn from the teachers. They will then learn how to do this for themselves. So, number one, I experience, um, and see people be discriminated against and have bias against peoples every day. We all do. Whether we are aware of it or not, everybody you come in contact with has a bias of their own, a perspective of them, their own, which needs to be recognized. It needs to be recognized that we each have our own personalized backgrounds, and we have to interact with other people who have their own personalized backgrounds. And, um, this training would allow that. And so self-awareness of these issues is essential to fixing the issues. The problem has arisen multiple times over the course of my sitting on this board, that the culture that is in the school, um, system is flawed, and there's distrust, and there is, um, issues in communication, and this would allow maybe just one step to addressing those issues effectively. Um, and I believe that in doing this leads me to my second point, that this is a, gonna be a trickle-down effect for students. Whenever teachers are trained on how to be self-aware of their biases, these, um, skills and this awareness will then be shown to students. I can tell you right now that my teachers and their behaviors and how they address problems, you can tell whether a person is aware of their own biases or not. And I can assure you that teachers who are aware of their own biases develop stronger relationships with students and better relationships and are able to further their education and their well-being even more. And so this allows, um, the chance to address biases early in students. It, it, sometimes in adults, it's too, too late, almost, to be able to address these biases, um, because they're so ingrained in who we are. Um, but with students, if we're able to maybe make an impact on a couple of teachers throughout the district, that will then shape the future and allow those students to realize early what their biases are and not allow them to continue the cycle of discrimination, not allow them to continue to be, be satisfied with not progressing the world socially or not progressing their own self-awareness. So this training would allow that to provide a good example of leadership, which then leads into my third point. No matter how much time or effort this training requires, positive social change is worth it. If I had to sit through seven hours of a video that would show me how to develop deeper and stronger relationships with everyone I encountered, it would not be a question whether or not I could carve out time in my day. It would not be a question whether or not I would partner with people who are willing and begging us to do that. Um, and so I believe that we really need, or you all really need to keep in mind the future. It is not about the mistakes that have been made in the past. There's many mistakes. That's what makes us human. But it's about what we can do in the future to prevent those from being so detrimental, and it's about what we can do in the future to help others not make those same mistakes. And so by allowing this training to occur, you are setting an example of leadership for students to then become leaders themselves. This isn't about, um, how our own experiences now or in the past have affected us. This is about allowing the opportunity for people to not have the negative experiences or not, or be able to cope with them better in the future. And so I believe that it's absolutely essential for the progression of this school district to allow this to be a, a positive use of, like, eliciting, soliciting self-awareness of teachers, and then therefore, it will impact the students. And that's what we're here for. We're here to make a change in this world. We're here to make a change in students' lives and developing personal relationships by eliminating these biases and educating our teachers. Um, that's how you do it. That's how you make change. And so I'd like to thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Coates. Do I hear a motion to, oh, yes, we do.
We still have, we still have public forum.
Thank you, Ms. Roundtree.
Okay, so we have, um, two folks left to finish up their time. So when you come up, I'm gonna call your name and tell you how much time is left, and we're gonna make sure the clock is set right for you. So Candace Vanister, and you have three and a half minutes left.
Again, good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members. Candace Vanister, Knox County resident. Usually on Valentine's Day, I'm rushing home from school to start making banana pudding with my son, Will, for my husband, Mark. It's his favorite dessert. This evening, I will share you, with you, Will's thoughts from February 10th, 2017. We found this in Will's room after his death, and I think it's important for you all to hear his words. My feelings, February 10th, 2017. Today has been a really good day. I woke up this morning around 8:00 or 8:30 because the girls are coming to clean the house. Most mornings, I wake up and feel sad I'm not asleep anymore. But this morning, I woke up feeling rested and good. I went downstairs, had popped tarts, and watched a movie. I felt entertained and happy rather than the normal feeling of laziness all day. I had McDonald's for lunch with my brother, and then I took a nap. When I woke up, my family was home, and I talked to them. At this point, I was already having a good day, because everything has gone well, and I haven't had any bad thoughts. Most times, I wake up and feel gloomy, because every morning I wake up is a reminder of my greatest failure. I never wake up early to go to school because I'm kicked out. I always have to face this every day when I wake up, and it has been building up for a while now. However, recently, my mom has been home in the daytime, and she has kept me happy. Also, everyone else is out of school, so I don't feel like an outcast today, or really since school has been called off since Monday afternoon for the flu. All of this aside, the biggest and best part of my day had not happened yet. This occurred when I woke up from my nap and walked the dog with my mom and dad. As we were walking, my dad told me that my attorney had called and that I could go back to school. Mr. Witt was working with the deputy law director, who knew my case was being treated unfairly. The deputy law director talked to the superintendent, then Buzz Thomas, and got me less days than I had been given. This is the best news I had heard in a long time. I'm so excited that I get to go back to be fit, to Farragut and be in a normal school. I like the alternative school, but it puts a label on me that I'm a bad person and that I'm one of the losers who isn't even good enough to go to a regular school. Now, none of that matters. I'm going back to Farragut, and I'm gonna be like everyone else I know. Hearing this was the best news I could have heard. Things only got better, as then I got to go see a movie with my brother and Brandon. It was a pretty good movie. All of this is until now, when it's about 11 o'clock and I'm writing this. Overall, today was a great day, and maybe things are beginning to look up. I feel happy now, like I matter. As you can imagine, I was broken by my son's words. Night school is a problem. While my son woke up every morning to face his greatest failure alone, I was in my classroom at West Hill School, meeting the needs of my students. My older son was home some days with Will, but my husband and I were at work. Did you hear the part about my mom was home with me and she kept me happy? Who thinks that night school is an acceptable option? We only saw Will in the 30 minutes it took to ke- take him to night school and after we picked him up at 7:30 at night. Where was the care for my son? Where was there even access to a guidance counselor? Why weren't, wasn't there a guidance counselor in the disciplinary meeting for a long-term suspension? Why did administration overreach in length of the suspension? Why didn't administration ever address the cellar of the supplement my son possessed? Why wasn't a directive from the lep- deputy law director followed by Farragut High School? Why did the appeals officer uphold that suspension? Why did it take the law director to clean up their mistakes? Consider these questions as a board member, but please, consider them as a parent. I think you would have questions, too. Will's words. I feel happy now, like I matter. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Demetrius Jaggers, and you have a minute and a half left of your time.
Thank you. So my, um, my last point of emphasis was just related to legislative priorities. And looking at the legislative priorities that have been proposed, uh, to me, it's a little concerning to s- to see nothing related to the way that, uh, immigration policy, uh, both on the state and local level with the 287G, is currently impacting, uh, families and students, uh, in Knox County schools. There are families who are preparing at this moment, uh, making concessions in the, in the event that they are deported. And there are teachers, uh, ELL teachers, ESL teachers, who are actually taking upon themselves to become, um, a power of attorney for some of these kids. Um, and, uh, there are teachers who don't feel like they have the support needed in order to cope with their students losing family members or being fearful about being arrested. And so I think this should be a point of emphasis as it relates to legislative policy for Knox County School Board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes public forum. Move adjourn.
Okay. Second. Mr. Norman seconded. All in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned.